I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I understand that Lori would like to address counsel. Please step forward to the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. I have a concern regarding the city's policy on utility bill late fees. Now here's the issue. Last month our utility bill was three days late, which resulted in a $28.33 additional fee. I would suggest that a 10% monthly fee, 100%, 20% annual, or a whopping 1,227% annual fee, if based on 10% for three days, is excessive. The city has the ability to shut off utilities, the shit and require a reconnection fee. I would think that the city doesn't need to change the charge fees. They're more at home at the payday loan industry. So my point is this. Obviously, I can pay my utility late fee. But however, it's still excessive. And I don't pay if you don't pay your dentist, your doctors, or your mechanics, although I'm sure you wish as I would, a 10% late fee. Neighbor communities charge much less. And I might ask if any of you know what our neighbor communities do charge for utility bill late fees? Anyone? Soline charges 2%. McPherson charges 2%. 10% is an obvious excessive amount. Who does this policy really hurt? It really hurts below-income residents, those who are struggling through hard times, or those who are on fixed incomes. Producers tell us, "Don't take advantage of the poor just because you can." Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Lori. You're welcome to stand if you wish to address us. Lori? All right, we're moving on with that.
Actually, I wasn't prepared to speak. I just wanted to be here in support of that.
Oh, okay.
But I will say that, as I understand Scripture, throughout the Old Testament and New Testament, we see many times where God identifies Himself with the poor to the degree that He actually says, "If you give to the poor," He considers it a personal love. And He said, "I will personally pay that love." And well, vice versa, that He takes it very personally. Everybody exploits the poor, thinks they had done them or harmed them. So that's just some general biblical principles about how God thinks about and advocates for the poor. So I just wanted to come to support Lori in that statement to you and offer that to you if you're concerned.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Amendments to the agenda. We have before you the amended agenda. Mayor DeCort. It is Thanksgiving week, so I hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving, safe travels. If you are out traveling, look forward to being with family and friends and that. November meetings. Any questions there? Is that the agenda? What is your desire?
Questions, Oprah?
Been moved. Do we have a second? Sir, two. Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, thank you.
Consent of Senator Hary. Appointments, item 7 EMS. Tim, you wish to rise to speak to these three. Potential appointments. Greg, got bad information on them.
Unfortunately, we couldn't be here tonight. I always have trouble pronouncing her name. It's Alasia. And I have trouble with the last name.
The Thorpe College?
There you go, thank you. Alasia's a college student with Bethany College. She's been through our class, and she just recently passed her M E class. And so I'm asking for approval for her to be joining our service.
Questions, Oprah?
There are second? Sir? Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor to say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Alasia is a member of EMS. Thank you. And she would've been here, but she's in Colorado, so things didn't get ready. But she has been here before. The other two are Chris and Ash, the Venables. They've been on the service before. They took a year to back them, and they'd like to come back on the service. Chris currently is with fire already. They would like to come back on the EMS.
What is your desire?
Move it through.
There are second?
Second.
Been seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
I'm trying to use the second.
I was.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
Okay. Does this bring these numbers up to where you want me to be?
I think we'd still like to have some more on, yes. We're currently putting together this for our next DMT class in next year. So the larger that number can be, the less burnout I have.
Sure.
Curious that kind of thing. Tim, please congratulate all of these affected members of the service of the community. If there are available on Monday or something you'd like to have here to personally thank them for their service and for their picture. Thank you.
Gary, you think of being seen?
No report.
Nothing under old business, will move under new business. S T P transmission. We'll call upon Greg to talk about this.
The spirit achieved this evening is a narrative. City of Lindbergh's had a contract for Southwest Power Administration or SPA Hydro Power for a number of years. Have been unable to take advantage of that due to transmission system constraints. The SPA is... The hydro power dams are located in predominantly Arkansas and Missouri. And getting them through the Empire District Transmission System historically has not... Or has been so constrained that it can't happen. With the development of the Southwest Power Pool as the regional transmission organization that manages transmission and dispatches generation, this is now an option. We have a contractually amount of 300 kilowatts on a monthly basis that we can receive. Cost per kilowatt is $4.50. Our current contract under Westar, we are paying $22.07 a kilowatt. So the annual savings to... For capacity would be $63,250 over our current contract. But prior to receiving the power, we would actually have to have a transmission study completed by the Southwest Power Pool. And they only do these quarterly. The next submission of study requests is due December 1 of 2016. We would actually submit it through Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. And the cost of the study is typically between $3,000 and $5,000. And I can't give you a harder number than that because the actual cost is determined by the number of participants in the study across the whole Southwest Power Pool footprint. So that is the range. And so what I'm asking is that the City of Lindbergh submit a transmission study request through the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency to the Southwest Power Pool for 300 kilowatts of Southwest Power Administration capacity in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Greg, would we are getting more than 300 kilowatts a month?
Highly unlikely. One of the other things we are working on is trying to get an increased allocation of Western area power authority, hydroelectric power. This actually comes out of the level in the basin of Colorado. Pricing, it's about the same, trying to get an additional megawatts, working with K M E to try to do that. If we could get that, that would save us between $220,000 and $250,000 a year in capacity charges. So if we were able to get these two things done, we would be saving in excess of $300,000 a year on our supply costs.
And then, Benny?
Excuse me, Bill, you go ahead.
Here. This 30 of $5,000 would be paid for by what?
Through the Contract Services light item in the General and Administration Contract Services.
In our Westar contract, the allowance for this type of resource to us is there, I assume? You know, the hydro stuff?
Yes, I talked to our FERC legal counsel, and it is allowed under our current contract of Westar.
Just off the subject of Lurie, I heard on the radio or somewhere, Westar are putting in solar run touch. And they're looking for people to get into that. Is that ever anything that we would be in or not looking at? Or is it...
What they're doing, it's called community solar, what they do. When they're looking for people to get in on it, is they're looking for retail customers to buy these stuff.
Okay. Are there other questions specific to this? Not taking us over, is that right? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, item B.
As we go on a little bit, I'd like to say again, it's so great to have you on all of this. And keep us in touch. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, Bill. Why is it...
No, that's all right. Well, it's hot, I might owe you. Carrie, you're up.
We're required by the state to do a boundary ordinance whenever we have an annexation order, there's a change in our system. I have found five since our last boundary ordinance. Called John Riggs to see if he would do it, and the more I talked, higher the price got. So I quit talking. We have $2,000 on the table to do this ordinance draft, which will be reviewed by staff and others, I'm assuming. That's a not-to-exceed number, and I expect it will be less than that. I'm asking for $2,000.
What is your desire?
Move it through.
Second.
Been seconded. Discussion. Questions, Gary? Are you saying you should have to do this every time you do it?
Yes.
Annually.
Annually.
Thank you.
Oh.
I missed that part.
Nice.
Every time you do it, annually?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Because the ordinance annually, if we don't annex anything during the year, we don't have to do one.
Okay. Top priority allows me to go over it now. Okay. Are there other questions? What do we get for this, just an ordinance?
Yes.
A lot of this right there?
It will be at least two pages long.
Of legal description.
Of legal description.
Just copy, put in place.
That's not big.
No. It's not far away.
Way out in the corner of Irma, looks out. Saw some trees.
A pile of rocks.
Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you, Gary. No executive session tonight. Moving on to department reports.
Who do you want first?
Here we go, just let's go here, okay?
I will give you an update on the desoposment trade open grant. It was awarded to Lindbergh last April for an extension. A 1.4 mile extension of the trail beginning at the north, trailhead parking lot, out to North Lake, down to Wells Fargo near the Baptist Church, and then back in to Swenson, and then reconnecting with the existing trail near Bethany Drive. Design and construction plans is scheduled for next year, with the actual construction and completion of the project in 2018. The original cost of engineering was estimated to be over $90,000. With the help of Tim Dunn, we've been able to bring that estimate down to $67,000, savings of over $30,000. To further reduce the impact on next year's budget for the engineering, you in September gave us a early start to do base mapping and boundary survey. And I'm going to give you an update on that. Where we stay in on that work item? Top graphic survey field were developed, which is basically the elevations, which are about four feet from high to low, pre-flowed. CAD files are ready for design work, adapt, computer aided design. That gives the engineers the ability to do all the design work in their office, not to do them all at the survey. The actual boundary field survey is completed, but it's being written up. That's the legal description of the project. What's left to be done is site staking. We should see that soon. And then the identification and the legal descriptions of whatever easements will be required. In other words, where we're building on private property. Most of that is Bethany Home. But there is a section on the south side of Wells Fargo that will need to be negotiated with that owner. Although, I think when we know the extent of the easement, it could be much less because I think a lot of the trails are going to be in the camera right way along that segment. Eventually, though, it's going to run into Pizza Hut. We'll need to negotiate those easements. That's the purpose, the main purpose for us of this part of the project. We're in a good position to start the design work first of the year, where we have budgeted the money, and expect to see the agenda items at first meeting on January 2 for roughly $53,000 worth of design work. Any questions?
I have two. One's a statement. I have a lot of buzzes out there. People are talking to me about it. You know, they're hoping next year and all of that, to get the trail done and go forward. So I think it's good news. Second question I had is really more an observation. I see there's a hole in a truck and stuff that's kind of along what is Bethany Drive as it goes out there. You know, on the south side between that and the other. Is there something going on already, or is that... How far does our ground go? Like, there's two tracks there. The one closest to the road is...
Oh, there would be a private landowner that owns half of that original rail bank, or half of the rail line between Bethany Drive and the property to the south. When that was divided up, when the railroad abandoned that right away, half of it went to us, half of it went to the property owner of record on the other side of Bethany Drive. And that's the policy of the county. When there's a highway in between property and railroad, you know, you think logically, you just give the ground to whoever adjoins because there's rightway on the other side. But that's not how it counts. But actually, half of that strip goes to the property owner on the other side of the highway. Billy Hudson owns that section of ground. What he's doing, he has in the past removed trees and tried to do a little leveling. Do you have any idea how wide it is?
No, I don't.
Probably only 50 feet.
I guess it's a statement to keep an eye on it, make sure we're not impacting anything that would be towards us or drive water our way, or do something different, this and that, so.
Good, yes.
You know. I see the hole there for backhoe.
It's coming through.
It's in backhoe there for a while, so.
Backhoe, that's not where the shovel is, the big shovel. If we go on right on the right a little bit, that's our shovel.
I was thinking of that.
Is that what you're talking about?
I think the excavator.
Excavator, thank you.
Yeah.
Come on, heavy equipment terms.
Yeah. Need a grandson.
I was just saying, it's longer in the house. So I can do more questions.
That's the only question I have. Anybody else? Where's the next phase of that community? Recreation Gulf Gate?
Tonight I'm going to give you guys a quick update on new fast logging, but this time pertaining to the numbers that we ended up with. It was really great to see the cheers and change in numbers. And I went back and looked at a document I took together a couple of years ago, and it just shows what our numbers were. And I was only able to go as far back as 2009. And our numbers, for the most part, pretty much for basketball fluctuated between '90 and '95. Our lowest year was 2011, which only generated about 86 kids. And when registration was all set in those years, we ended up with about 150 kids. And I believe that's the first time we've actually exceeded 100 participants in basketball, so that was really great to see. And also generated about 14 teams, which is the most I've ever had to deal with, which is great. But I think we're only struggling at this point, unfortunately, just have about five teams that don't have coaches yet. So we're still organizing coaches for those teams. But overall, it's looking like it's going to be a pretty good basketball season. And I think we're finally moving in the direction we need to be going with basketball to change this season. So, any questions?
How do you go about filling the coaching spots?
For the most part, it's parents all send some nasty bills out and ask them first if they're willing to or want to set up to do it. And you still have that, I guess, promo effect where if they do coach, they get their child speedway. And then you also see we have college kids or high school kids available, but it's very difficult with basketball specifically because their own basketball season is ongoing, and so there's not many kids interested in even coaching outside of that sport to begin with, so.
Still might be able to find... I don't know if you approach the college with some of their other athletes, maybe a football player there. I'm sure they play basketball too, so.
I'm not sure what you said there.
Do we have anything on the city's Facebook page, which has a pretty large following?
Not currently, no. You thought happening as well?
Did I miss an update on the golf course where we talked about Brown's play and all that? I guess I saw the golf.
No, we haven't done an update on that, yeah. I'm still working on all that, so I want to pull in the numbers of the last couple of months and back to as well, include those.
Okay. People still golfing down there?
Yes. Yep, still having people out there, still having a bit of fear and concessions too, so always a good thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a comment on the golf course. That was after yesterday, and the rock that you agreed to purchase is in place. And the milling's on the cart pass through nicely.
Good. Thank you for getting the team. I think Chris, you probably been involved a lot in that. Appreciate your amazing efforts to make that happen, so it's good to hear your apology. Larry, you want to talk about finances? Got seven notes, Larry.
We've got two sets of documents here. The first one I've brought out is a financial statement analysis. Page one, that's talking mainly about a general fund. We're looking through the first three quarters of the year through September. About $1.66 million is received. That's about a little over 80% of the year. Last year was $1.8 million, which is over 96%, so that there is a reduction in the revenue. Property tax collections, part of that. We did increase property tax collections this year, $725,000, $725,000. That's almost 94%. But budget last year was $670,000, that was over 98%. So property tax collections, even though they are higher percentage-wise of what's allocated budgeted, it is down. Sales tax collections, it's down both county and city. You can see $320,000. The county sheriff last year was over $377,000. Local sales tax is $184,000. Last year was over $365,000. And the main reason for that decrease is $176,000 is being used to cover bond obligations. So even though it is a large reduction, the percentage reduction is about the same as what the county reduction is overall connections. Interest, $34,600. That's a little over budget. Last year was $28,000. Part of the reason for the increase is there has been a slight increase in the interest rate, very, very slight increase. But also, this year I've been able to invest a little bit more of the funds into investments as opposed to keeping it in the checking account. So we've been able to get a little bit more interest coming in. Conference center, $145,000 in revenue compared to $117,000 last year. That just shows that there's more activity there. Next page, expenditure analysis. Expenditures sold more than $150,000 compared to $1.3 million last year. Part of that reason is you look down in the street departments, you can see expenditures are $305,000 compared to $193,000 last year. For this year's budget, the street department is sharing in the cost of street improvements. So sales tax allocation, property tax allocation, going towards street improvements instead of all of it going through special streets. So you've got the extra revenue allocated and the extra expenditures. The other departments, there's not a whole lot of difference. So I think that pretty much covers the general fund. If any of us have any questions on that. Page four, recreation. $76,000 was received compared to $80,000 last year. Recreation revenues are down slightly. Part of that is property tax revenue, so $55,000 compared to $62,000 last year. But the activity fees are up slightly, $20,000 compared to $18,000. Correspondently, expenditures are about $4,000 over last year, $67,000 compared to $63,000. Golf course, revenues are up slightly, $152,000 compared to $148,000 last year. If you look on page five, you can see property tax collections are still slightly over $40,000 compared to $42,000. Activity fees are down slightly, $39,000 over $92,000 last year. $603 has been increased, memberships, but there's been $1,740 less in cart shed, turning the rails, and additional $1,732 less in green fees. So the memberships have been up a little bit, but the walk-in traffic has been down. Expenditures are $118,000 compared to $140,000. So we are able to keep the expenditures down slightly this year compared to last year. Ambulance, $173,000 revenues compared to $194,000 last year. There's $28,000 less in rent fees. And I think what we discussed at the staff meeting today, I think there's been a lot of activity as far as ambulance. But a lot of those are non-runs that they go to the incident, but they don't transport. So if they don't transport, they're not charging. So even though there's a lot of activity, we're not getting the revenue type activities.
Is that $7,176? Is that an actual increase to my person counties? Is that what you're saying?
There was a tax increase.
Over many years, is that correct?
So it has been steady for many, many years. But they finally did give us an increase. Correspondingly, because the revenues have decreased, the expenditures have increased about $15,000. Page six, special sewer. Revenues down slightly, it's $433,000 compared to $448,000. But also the expenditures are down this year, $527 compared to $571,000. And part of that is in March, one of the bonds was paid off. So that has given us a lot of reduction in expenditures. The electric, there's about $2.5 million received. That's compared to pretty, closer to $2.5 million last year. So there's very, very little difference in electric revenues. Same with the expenditures, 2.3 million compared to 2.2 million. Page seven, you can see the purchase pattern has gone up slightly, $1.56 million compared to $1.4 million. So energy costs are up. If we get some of these things like they're just talking about through, we can see some reduction in the expenditures. Distribution, $271,000 compared to $295,000. Part of that is just that I think there's been a little bit less capital purchased. They're still running on two lines. So one of these states will find a third line and get the department up to full speed. General administration, there's not a whole lot of... $183 compared to $189,000. A lot of revenues have gone up a little bit, $45,000 compared to $318,000. On the offside, expenditures have gone down a little bit, $387,000 compared to $96,000. So that's pretty quick run through, but there's a lot of information.
Questions in the center? Cory goes to his next sheet.
If somebody does want more specific information, can they get that from you? Do you think that you are out of available options?
Is there anything on the long sheets?
Basically, it's just a...
Funds.
Funds, just the numbers.
This just shows you your year-to-year, so you can see not much of a contribution. We are at the general fund, the various departments. So those are not two pages worth of these documents. It's on the general fund. Sewer fund is a one-page sheet. So it just shows year-to-year, but there's... Some of them are different from the previous year. Ambulance fund. Electric fund is a two-page sheet. Actually, it's a three-page sheet. Water fund. And then the last two smaller sheets are the recreation and the golf funds. What I find to be interesting this year is because recreation ran the golf fund out last year compared to revenue expenditures. So golf fund has none of the recreation does this year. So golf fund might have to... They don't have the recreation fund. So we'll pay that for the prior years. A lot of information here that's really dry information unless you like numbers.
I guess the big picture, revenues were down almost across the board, but down enough that you wouldn't have any concern. Well, the most expenditures are down also.
We've been able to keep the expenditures down accordingly.
Throughout this whole process, Larry, everything was identified or anything identified by the audit, auditors and all of that. It all been kept in check and you feel this is, you know, I don't need to be diving into that. But I'm happy to maybe go with you guys.
If it's possible, we've been able to keep things in check.
The big items that they identified, for instance, the receivables on utilities did not make it to balance, if you remember when they discussed that. Even though our data cash reports were working, for some reason we had to take variance in year-end receivable amount. Well, they have, I say they, Larry, Jerry and the front office staff have changed the process. That's why we don't take any payments after 4/30 is we have to balance at the end of the day to get our receivables report. We can't carry it over to the next day, close it out prior day, because then it will throw... If we carry the 10th over to the 11th and close it out, that activity would actually show up on a receivables report on the 11th. And then you carry a variance forward for each day, which causes your monthly reports and your annual variance report on receivables to be off. So that was one of the big items that they identified. One of the things that they identified that I'm not sure how important it is, is we have our component entities such as the library, the cemetery, et cetera, audited. Checks and balances from good financial management are very limited just because of the size of the operation and the size of the staff they have. You know, when we're giving the cemetery $12,000, doesn't really make sense to spend those auditing dollars to audit that. Because in the scheme of things, what is your...
Decimal, decimal.
Yes, decimal. It's immaterial to the overall budget. Same way with the library. So we'll look at actually not auditing those. Can I remember what was with the other ones? I can't advise there.
That's fine. I just wanted to, you know, as a comment, make sure there's still... He can answer the foreground. It sounds like we have one. That's good.
The revenues were there. It's just hard to prove that despite my closing out here each day, we could actually prove it, so.
All right, thank you, Larry. Any others for council members?
I have one. In light of the public comment, it's been a long time ago. I remember when we made the switch to increase the late fees. I know that there were a lot of... We had a lot of people that were late resulting in extra manpower orders. People had to shut off, provide them to shut off utilities, catch up with the payment and so on and so forth. And part of the time, and I don't disagree that it is an excessive charge, I suspect it's had a very positive impact on the timeliness of payment now. And I'm wondering if it would be an appropriate time to look at those numbers and see if the justification is there to keep the late fee 10%.
There are numerous cities. When K and U has their fall public relations and utility workshop show of hands, over half of the cities there say they charge 10%. We do stress to the people when they are late that we do have an option for them to catch up. And usually the ones that do catch up, within a couple, three months, they're back late again. We're trying not to penalize people. We're just trying to find a way to split them current. And it's not a 10% per month, it's a 10% on one timely charge. So if they carry that forward into a second month, which we never like to do, occasionally that has happened. It's not another 10% on that late amount, it's just the other 10%.
So despite the fact that it's, what'd she say, 2% to our mark and 2% to our solid power, 10% isn't out of the norm about what is seen across the state of Kansas?
There's KCC that has a certain limit, that's the line, you know, for some. Some of these other cities have utilities outside that three-month limit. So by being under KCC rules, they are only allowed to do 2%. DSNL actually does 5%. So there are a lot of other utilities that have just within the three-month limits that are charging a 10%.
But have we seen a decrease? Have we seen a decrease in late payments?
I don't believe so, Jerry. Do you think?
It sometimes gets a little bit cyclical. We tend to have more in the summer because that's when the bills are a little bit higher. But that being said, we have the frequent flyers that are always on the late. And they always pay the late fee.
And do you know about our plans to try to get the current?
I have a question for you on that same subject. Does the 10% justify the personnel expense and extra time and everything else involved in this? Is it making it where it makes financial sense compared to our previous one?
I'm sure I understand your question.
Okay. What I'm saying is, are we losing money on late fees and so on if we're charging 2%? Does it cost us more to deal with the hassle, manpower needs and everything at 2% than we're gaining from that?
I think at 2%, we would be losing funds.
And that's not to say that there's not ever an exception. Because, you know, just this last time around, someone called and said, "I'm in the hospital. I can't get there to pay my bill." Okay. We don't charge them a late fee because we know that it's an involuntary circumstance. Same thing will happen if someone would call and say, you know, "I'm going to be traveling. I'm not going to be there. I can't," you know. If we know, we can make arrangements with them. If we don't know and they don't contact us, we have really no other recourse than to, you know, try to get their attention. Kind of like sometimes that does.
Do you need additional? Do you want the staff to do any additional value or any council members or anything you're looking for?
Well, they go out the 20th of the month each month. And they're not delaying until after the 10th. So see, you've got over 20 days that a person has a bill in hand before it's postponed.
I'd be curious to know how, what impact that really has, $20,000 in a month or a year, whatever the correction point is.
There is, it is reported, penalties. It has some other stuff in there with it, but I know it's like $33,000. But it did just include penalties and include something else, I think.
I'm trying to justify the statement that affects the board more than it affects anybody else. I think it affects people that aren't necessarily personally responsible for paying your bills. I paid my double times on penalties in my own fault, so not my glory. I can say I can, I'll take care of it and pay it.
$33,000 in customer sales and revenue, penalties and sales taxes. So that says penalties, but also includes bonus stuff. So it'd be less than $33,000.
Cory has asked for the staff to give him that number if he works with Larry. What the annual revenue generation of penalty fees. Sure. Is that our standard?
Or in fact, can we...
Dollars and number per month, average number per month.
My assumption would be if we do go to a court, say, if that loss came right like 2%, then we are going to be subsidizing those people for people who do pay for that on time. Is that easy to spread out on Saturday? Is that okay?
Okay. Any other others? Anybody? Oh, Bill.
Greg, I don't know if you updated council on the status in 2:40. No. Roxbury Bank has requested a hearing that eventually did do once. And on Friday, I got a call from Casey Law, their attorney. Last week, they did obtain a judgment against Mr. Hulse allowing the bank to remove the stuff that remains on that property. Casey told me they expected to have that done within 30 days. So that was his request for continuing the hearing that had been previously scheduled for tonight.
Is that in relation into the law? I mean, you guys had to go to court, they won the judgment at that moment or whatever.
Yes, yes. It's last week. And he sent me a draft of the journal entry. It's not that it hasn't signed, but allows them to remove the property and to charge these fences back against whatever condition they're dealing from the stuff that's there.
Does that make it a done deal? I mean, can Joe go back and appeal this?
Theoretically, it would be appealed. It's done within 10 days, but he would have to post a appeal bond to do that. I think the chances of that are not very high, but theoretically.
What would be the amount of the appeal bond?
I don't know. That'd be a different kind of...
So I mean, it's still possible.
They detailed, they detailed the expenses to which they have, what they've expended to date in storage, on things that they've already moved off, and obtained a money judgment against them as well for those things. Addition to the right to remove. So I'm sure there would have to be some type of, you know, bond posted. And I think it would be a very substantial number.
I think you just sell it and bring your business numbers on that degree.
He did indicate that they have conflict.
Any other others? What's your desire?
What is her?
We'll stand next to it.
We can beat her a lot.
I just wondered if it's good to breakfast. I wasn't prepared to say that. You all the same time? I'd be nice to everybody. Thank you very much.